Thank you. Starting now. Good evening. My full name is Kristin Lilly Renee Wood. I'm sixty-six years old and reside in East County, just about three point one miles from here. I'm a San Diego County retiree after twenty-nine years of civil service with Health and Human Services Agency. I'm a member of the Cameron YMCA for about a year now. Absolutely love my water aerobics classes there. Those classes have helped me lose sixty pounds in the last year, and the health benefits have been phenomenal. It appears that I inadvertently caused quite a scandal on the morning of Thursday, December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, after another wonderful class. And by the way, they're all great classes. I had just showered, dressed, and hugged our instructor Peggy, wished her and some of my other aqua sisters a wonderful new year, and deported the locker room for Palm Springs. It was on the morning of Thursday, December twelfth, that my aqua sister Vicki called to say, Chrissy, I'm so sorry about what happened last night in Santee. I replied, What happened? Her answer was, Oh my God, you don't know, do you? Let me send you the Instagram video. I watched it and I collapsed in tears. Since then, the amount of organized hatred and lies to vilify and demonize me and other members of the transgender community has truly been disheartening and disgusting. I'm here to spread the light of truth in the face of these inaccuracies. I'm a mom, a grandmom, and as my little other granddaughter says, my nana. Now, please look at me. Listen to the sound of my voice. I am a threat to no one. In the year I've been a member of the Y children have attended summer camp, and I've been with their parents and grandparents in the women's locker room with me, and there has never, ever been an incident, ever. Not until one was manufactured using this forum to do so. Transgender is simply a medical condition, as is my need to wear corrective lenses when I drive, my high blood pressure, and my type-two diabetes. I am fully transitioned, as can be confirmed with my doctor at Sharks, who is also my gynecologist. I am sorry that this forum was previously used to spread lies and a hateful political agenda. God bless you all for this opportunity. And in the words of Maya Angelou, "A wild woman... Ohio, thank you. A wise woman wishes to be no one's enemy, and a wise woman refuses to be anyone's victim." I am a threat to no one. Bless you all and thank you.
So gross. He's my man. This is his scam.
Well, thank you, everybody, but we do need to get on with the other speakers. And we normally don't allow that, by the way, but I thought it was important for you to express yourselves. And so, so let's try, after the other speakers finish, not to do the same, because we want to get through this tonight. And I know somebody's got to get home for a Matlock rerun, right? Oh, that's right, most of you aren't old enough to know who Matlock is. All right. Okay, let's go ahead and continue, and everybody gets two minutes now. Thank you.
Speaker Britt? If I can have Speaker Britt?
Somebody named Britt? Okay.
Two minutes.
Where's the timer?
It'll start.
Yeah, no, come on.
You can start and then it'll come up.
Thank you all so much for giving us the opportunity. I appreciate the decorum where everyone has the freedom to speak.
And for when?
And I know that there are mixed opinions in this room. I'm a mom, I'm a mother, I'm a naturally born woman. And I want to call this what it is, and I ask the audience to remain quiet. This is a war on women. This is an assault on the definitive work of women over the last two centuries. To be equal members of society while being protected in our sacred places under the clear and definitive umbrella of woman, a grown-up female. This radical new reworked language to force everyone to play by the rules of an ideology that is based on feelings rather than biology and truth is unsustainable, and it's dangerous. If everyone can be a woman, then no one is a woman. If feelings now drive and supersede basic biology, then anything goes and all societal constructs can be torn down and remade. I mean, that is the logical conclusion. Bloomberg just ran an article today about a forty-five-year-old centimillionaire who has a full team working to reboot him to an eighteen-year-old. So when he gets to that point, does he suddenly become a legal eighteen-year-old? I pulled up and the vice mayor spot was open. If I identify as vice mayor and maybe even get a tattoo that says vice mayor and hand out business cards as vice mayor, am I legally vice mayor? And am I allowed now to the table? Do I get to sit right beside you? Can I yell discrimination if you don't play by my rules? I'm serious. The logical conclusion of policies that are catered to ideologies that are not based in any truth is utter and complete chaos. We are asking you to step in and to put forward an ordinance that will protect women and girls. Biological women use women's lockers room. Biological men use men locker rooms. The same goes for bathrooms. Play the hero. We're at the tipping point in society. That's what I have to say.
Next speaker I have is Speaker Brooke.
I think Speaker Brooke is not speaking, so do you want me to go for her? Is Carrie next?
You can't see time, so you have two minutes. Are you Speaker Brooke or?
No, she is, but she's not speaking.
Okay, so she's not speaking. Are you Tracy or? Okay, Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor Minto and the rest of our city council. A fellow advocate made a comment in my social media group not too long ago. He said, "What if our kids were actually the most important things in our lives and not just something we said?" Let's let that phrase sink in. The city of Santee is standing on the precipice of a topic that could have far-ranging policy change to protect the spaces used by women and children. The city leases the property and building of the YMCA for one dollar per year. You have the option of not renewing that lease. Last minute please, there we go. You have the option of protecting countless women and countless children, protection from a man who feels like or identifies with a woman on any given day. I am asking that our council put forth a motion to discuss and review on the next agenda, ending our lease to the Cameron Family YMCA until policy is changed that biological men stay out of women's locker rooms and bathrooms. I am a woman, and I say no more to men gender-appropriating women.
The next speaker I have is Speaker Carrie.
I'm identifying tonight as Christie Lynn Wood, so I have three minutes. This is war. This is a war on women, children, and the truth, capital T. And the enemy is disguised in high heels, lipstick, and a shaved beard, trying to slap down their flag, redefine words, and demand all obey or else. This is a spiritual, psychological war, and the enemy has been exposed. Cultural appropriation is wrong, and gender appropriation is wrong. I am a woman, a true woman, and I'm here tonight because I have something called a motherly instinct. That's what I have innately as a woman, and I, my job is to protect my children. And that's why I'm here. That's something real women have. This is not about equality. This is about complete domination and superiority. We're not going to accept this. Where is the equality and protection for Rebecca Phillips? Where is her protection? This is about the protection of children and women. Never in the history of our country have we created policies based on gender ideologies based on lies. Lies. There is no such thing as a transitioning gender. That is a made-up fantasy. It doesn't matter if you chop your penis off. It doesn't make you a woman. It doesn't make you a woman. It makes you unwell. And this is serious. We want, we are not going to bow down to your gender ideology cult. We're not. Your fantasy land. It doesn't make it real because it's your fantasy land. So here's what needs to happen tonight. You guys, while you still have your balls, do something about it. Okay? While you still have them, while you can, do something about this. We need protection for the little Rebecca's. I don't know if any of you have daughters, but if your daughter was in that locker room, what would you have done? Thank God, maybe many of you weren't in there, because I know a lot of men would have gone in, and it would have been ugly. So if we would, if we want to talk about...
Stop.
I get more time.
Your time is up.
So the next speaker I have is Danielle Wilkerson. The next speaker I have is Danielle Wilkerson. Danielle, if you can come to the podium.
Stop, stop, stop. The microphone is turned off. Nobody's hearing you. Your time is up. Carrie, your time is up.
Danielle, you have two minutes, please.
Yeah, they did.
Hi, my name's Danielle Wilkerson. I am also a woman, and I am also a mother of a daughter and a son who finds... I'm a little shook after that last presentation. I came here to say something very different. Obviously, I'm in support of Chrissy and for trans people in East County in general. I am against hateful rhetoric. Thank you. I'm against hateful rhetoric, against anyone, man, woman, children, black, white, anything in between. And what I just listened to was incredibly disrespectful, incredibly hateful. And this woman has the audacity to call herself a Christian? Jesus said, "Let he who has no sin throw the first stone."
Please speak to us up here.
Okay, sorry.
We need to be able to hear you up here.
Jesus said, "Let he who has no sin throw the first stone." And I think that woman was throwing a lot of stones and a lot of hate. Yeah, I can speak. I smile a lot of time. Again, continues to be hateful, continues to be disruptive. I am here today to speak about love, positivity, and that I would feel incredibly comfortable with my children in the locker room with Chrissy. Honestly, I think this woman and her violence is more of a threat than any trans person could ever be. Black trans women specifically face the highest rates of violence in this country. They are not the threat, they are not the problem. What this woman is describing is fear of men. They are afraid of men coming into the locker room and causing harm against women. They are not afraid of trans people. They are not afraid of trans women. They are afraid of a grown man taking advantage of this policy and of our children. Thank you. I will finish in my lot of time.
The next speaker I have is Jose Cortez. Jose Cortez?
A little tall, so I'm going to adjust this.
Sounds good.
All righty, well, thank you, Mayor and city council members. I'm a longtime East County resident. I grew up in El Cajon and Lakeside. I consume a lot of services here in Santee. I go to the Sportsplex. I go to the Chinese restaurant Lucky's Chinese Discount Tire. I'm definitely a consumer, and I'm a longtime person that has a lot to say about living in East County. And as someone who identifies as bisexual, as somebody who has grown up facing the systemic violence that a lot of us in the LGBTQ community experience here in East County, I have to say that this attack on Kristen, which is, it was an attack, is not an isolated incident done by hateful individuals alone. This is part of a national campaign attacking trans people nationwide. A hundred and twenty state legislature bills being proposed, just as we're speaking right now, seeking to roll back protections that have been won. And so, right now, we have to not see this as an incident of individuals, but as part of a historic moment that you all as city council people have a part to play in. And partisanship, right, is a lot of what we hear in these spaces, but obviously apathy is also a partisan position in the favor of the powerful, of those oppressing those who are being impacted. I'm going to say right now that the media that perpetuated the lies against Christine, the hack politicians that backed these plays of the lies in the media to try and gain position and political points are all part of the same tree, and we have to come together as elected officials, but also as a community, to call for a mass movement, for an agenda item on the next Santee city council agenda, calling for increased resources in the face of these attacks, for the creation of a center potentially here where there is none in Santee or in East County in general, to serve and educate our communities and to bring about a world that we could all have tomorrow if it wasn't for the very disproportionate impact of hateful people trying to profit off of suffering and exploitation. So do the right thing, please.
The next speaker I have is Tracy Phil. Tracy? Phil is a different one. Okay, Richard McKitch? Much?
My name is Richard Much, thank you. I've been a Santee resident since nineteen sixty, and my concerns are that any person that is supposed to be a transgender, I think they need to prove to me and the community that this person has been sexually reassigned or transgendered, if you will.
Hey, stop, please.
From a male to a female by providing proof of this sex reassignment surgery, that are known as vagina plasping, and it's a procedure that removes the penis and the scrotum encased testicles, and a vagina is constructed, which would transgender a man to a woman. And until such proof, these men are no more than a cross-dresser or even a female impersonator, no matter what they call themselves or identify as or even feel like. And they need to stay out of women's lockers, showers, bathrooms, and any other area that are designated for women-only. Thank you for your turn.
The next speaker I have is Jason Fry.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, my name is Jason Fry. I am the president of the Humanist Association of San Diego. I'm on the Hillcrest Town Council. I teach political science in a community college. And also, I am a former aqua aerobics instructor. I want to say a couple of things. Number one, when we look at this issue, we look at FBI statistics, and we do not see trans people preying on people in locker rooms. But what we do see is we see vile rhetoric that gives license to hatred and abuse. As was mentioned previously, black trans women are a demographic that overwhelmingly receives a lot of abuse from external sources. Not only that, but if you look at people in suicide rates, black trans women have some of the highest rates of suicide because of that license that's been given to that. And looking at this, we need to protect people. We do. Not protect creepy little voyeur spying on people in restaurants, causing problems, but people just minding their own business after a nice aqua aerobics class.
He's calling that girl a creepy little voyeur. No.
I recommend that the city take some kind of stance to say that that type of bigotry is not acceptable here because it is clear that that type of license leads to suicide attempts and gives license to people to be abusive, puerile, churlish, and immature. And for those people who are calling to see people's genitalia, I want to see your browser histories because it seems...
I want to see his browser history.
So do more, do right, do east. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Mike Newell. Mike Newell?
My name is Mike Newell. I have lived in Santee for thirty-five years. Unlike many people present here, I am a resident of Santee. I pay taxes in Santee, and I vote in Santee. I'm also a member and actively involved in the programs of the Cameron YMCA, a building that is owned and provided by the city of Santee. Protesting is a right in this country. In this case, the act of protesting a law people disagree with, the people, the media, and the cause have shifted it to a person. Lost in the shot is an individual who is also wanting to exercise their right under the law. I served twenty-two years in the military, tacked with preserving and protecting rights of people all over the world. The right to protest, the right to vote, the right to live our lives with certain personal freedoms guaranteed under the law. I am not here to debate a cause. I'm not here to pose in front of a TV camera. I am here to support a person who is in pursuit of their rights under the law. I also wanted to make to know, this is a person who wore a military uniform for eight years, who went out and defended other people's rights and now has to fight for their own. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Bonnie. Bonnie Price? Yeah, sorry, there's a, it's a long...
I'm Dr. Bonnie Price. I'm a friend of Kristen Wood. I have been friends with her for about two decades. And I knew her when she was male, and I applaud her decision to become a female, fully female. She took advantage of medical science to relieve her pain at not being who she felt she really was. And I regard her as a walking, talking example of what modern medicine can do in our society. And we have to think about people's mental health. When they are hurting, they hurt. And what I would like you to do tonight and from now on is to do what you have been doing in the community, which is leading the community to love, not hate, and to respect the happiness of a person who is the happiest I have ever seen her in the couple decades I've known her. And she exercised her right that was first enunciated in the preamble to the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal; they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Kristen has found happiness. Help spread the joy she feels." Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Shavon. Shavon?
Hello, my name is Shavon. I'm a lifelong resident of Santee. I attended public school here and went to West Hills High School and finished my undergraduate here in San Diego. I'm here today as a constituent of Santee because this topic is near and dear to my heart. As someone with a background in anti-discrimination law and psychology, Kristen has allowed me to speak in support of her today. I cannot speak the trans experience, as I am a cisgendered woman, and I'm not trying to, but I'm here to speak for women in general. Those who put hate into existence and wish death upon trans women in the LGBTQIA+ community do not represent all constituents of Santee, and I'm tired of being lumped into that. The existence of trans women in traditionally woman-centered spaces does not harm me as a woman, does not put me in an unsafe environment, does not take away from my experience and my own womanhood. As a cisgendered woman, trans women are just as much a woman as I am. We experience violence in the same ways and along the same rates. According to RAINN, the rape and incest national statistics, taken from the DOJ and the Department of Defense as of 2022, they state that one in six women in the U.S. have been sexually assaulted in their lives. The Violence Against Women Organization cites studies taken from the DOJ and Department of Defense that over fifty percent of trans people experience sexual violence, with one in three trans women and girls making up the largest part of that statistic. And as said previously, black trans women make the largest part of that statistic for violence. I'm citing these statistics to show that trans women are women and that all women in the United States are subjected to shockingly high rates of sexual violence. To say otherwise indicates that you don't understand what it means to be a woman or that you even care. Trans women and all women of Santee are watching tonight and have been waiting for you to do what is right for all Santee residents, which is to accept all people for who they are and not to discriminate against them because you believe your religion allows you to do so. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Maria. The next speaker, Maria? Maria?
Hello, Santee City Council. My name is Maria. My pronouns are she and her. I'm a resident here in Santee. I'm a parent, and I was an educator in East County for two decades. I taught approximately three thousand students in my career, and I was, my school's 2021 Teacher of the Year in El Cajon. And it was my privilege to get to work with all kinds of youth, including transgender youth. Over my time as an educator in East County, I got to know many students that went through gender, social gender transition, which means changing their name, their pronouns, their clothing. And I got to experience what they went through through their eyes. Their gender identity or how they see themselves did not match the gender that they were assigned. Some had supportive parents, some did not. All of them lived in hostile East County and experienced violence in some way. This is a statement to you from Santana High School students. They asked me to read this to you. "The students of the Color Spectrum GSA at Santana High School in Santee submit this statement in support of trans youth and trans people everywhere. The protest and media reports against Kristen makes us feel unsafe in this community. Some of our members attended recent counter protests at our local YMCA, and we have seen media reports where we have seen adults in our community speaking out against trans people in hateful ways that leave us feeling scared and confused. All youth and all people deserve to feel safe in their community. The misgendering and misrepresentation of Kristen is disrespectful and difficult for us as trans youth. Thankfully, we have also seen some amazing people come out to support us. We are thankful for all of the people that have supported Kristen and, as an extension, have supported us. The trans community has watched this unfold, and they have been a victim to this harm. If we want to protect women and children, we need to focus on how hate deeply wounds us. As a city council, you have a duty to protect and respect all types of residents. I implore you to please become educated on this matter. I ask you to learn and take training from people out of your comfort zone so you can educate your community on the real harm, which is hate."
Next speaker I have is Ryan Corbey. So Ren or Ryan?
Ren.
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 Good evening. My name is Ren Corby. I live in Lakeside and work, worship, and shop in Santee. I exercise at the YMCA. When I come to the Y to swim in its beautiful pool, I appreciate that I'm privileged in many ways. I'm physically healthy, I've been taught how to swim, and I can afford a membership. I realize many people in our community and most people in the world do not have these opportunities. I am white, heterosexual, cisgender male. That allows me to go pretty much anywhere that I'm legally permitted and to be my full, authentic self. I am a member of classes that have been historically created for the advantage and privilege of people like me. But people like me are seeing change, and change can be a frightening thing for those who want to maintain their privilege. People's attitudes towards sex and gender are changing. We are more aware now that our identity does not solely conform to that imposed by classical biology, religion, or historical social norms. Here, at the Santee YMCA but all across the U.S., our communities are facing existential challenges in how we perceive, judge, and respond to people that are not like us. We read about it every day, mass killings here, insurrections there, disruptions at school board meetings everywhere. The reality is that we do not need to be frightened of change. Yes, I have empathy for young women who are worried for their safety in locker rooms, but we must listen, reflect, and to each other with compassion and intention to help everyone, including the LGBT community and women like Christine. Not just those with privilege. We do not need to be afraid of what we do not understand. That is a reaction from the last millennium. To those who are afraid of losing power, the old guard who worry about becoming irrelevant, powerless, or unwanted, you are still needed just in new ways. Your knowledge, imagination, and experience are as important as ever as we learn to collaborate. And if someone is afraid of losing power, they never truly had it to begin with. Power comes from humility, compassion, and a desire to serve. End this mentality that judges individuals, respects them, disrespects
The next speaker I have is Marie. Reminder, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. This is my first time speaking. I'm a little nervous. But anyway, I came out of my home today with no intention of being here. I'm not here for hate. I know that every single person in this room is valuable, is loved, and I don't know you. I don't know you. But I do know this. I hear a lot of today, tonight, about hate and against Chrissy, against transgender. But I'm here to defend my identity. I am a woman, like many have stated. I am a woman, and I have grandchildren, I have granddaughters and daughters and sons. And there's so much to say, enough I've heard, there's so much to say, but I just want to make sure that you all understand that there is a truth. Each and every soul in this room was born by a woman. There will not be another person that can have a baby. And there are people that the door has been opened, starting with transgender. Might not be a transgender, but it also could include, because I doubt, when you go to a gym, they say, "Are you a trans?" They certainly can't ask me if I'm pregnant. You know, you can't ask somebody if they've been vaccinated. So I don't think that question is in that application. So that leaves the door open for not just trans, but other anyone, any male. And having been somebody who has been violated multiple times sexually, as has my family, this is not, this is, this just gives an opportunity for people that aren't necessarily on their best behavior, not necessarily aren't coming sincerely. But I don't, I feel like, as much as other same people are attacked, that we women, we women, not assigned women, biological, when I die and someone digs up my bones, say I was a female.
The next speaker I have is Victoria Brennica. Victoria?
Hello, my name is Victoria Brennica. I use she/her pronouns. I am a woman. I am an educator. I am a community member, and I am a lifelong resident of East County. And I am here in solidarity with Chrissy and trans people here in East County. Each of you standing or sitting in front of us right now were elected to serve and represent your constituents here in Santee, and I would hope that you continue to ensure that the folks here are safe and continue to do what you were elected to do. So please ensure that all of our facilities here in the city of Santee remain trans-friendly. In addition, each of you on this council need to speak out against anti-trans rhetoric to ensure Chrissy and other trans women in our community feel safe. I'm going to mention this because somebody earlier mentioned that they were a survivor. I too am a survivor, and I was, I'm a survivor, and I was, I experienced that from a cis man. I do not feel unsafe around any women. I would not feel unsafe with any woman, trans woman, any woman in a locker room. I'd feel unsafe with men in a locker room. And I think, you know, if we're going to bring up, you know, being a survivor or anything with sexual harassment, I think that it needs to be known that trans women are women and trans women have only treated me with respect and safety, and I don't think that it is right to assume that all, all trans women are somehow dangerous or anything like that. I think it is a disgusting stereotype, and I don't think that we should be using that rhetoric here, and I hope that all of you on this council, please speak out against that and continue to.
The next speaker I have is Ben Richards.
I was here at both rallies, Christie. I appreciate what you said up there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, got it. But the thing comes to these parents is that we have boundaries. And I'm hearing a lot of language about inclusivity and respecting people's boundaries. When are my boundaries going to be respected? Because all I'm asking for, I personally don't want, and I feel unsafe, when a grown man, that's my belief system, is taking a shower in the YMCA locker room with my seven-year-old daughter. And I don't appreciate it, and I feel unsafe, but these people want me and you to bend over backwards and continue to respect their ever-growing list of crazy boundaries while at the same time, I used to say that they don't care about your boundaries and they're still going to cross it. But I don't say that anymore. They care about your boundaries. They're going to actively seek to identify your boundaries, and they're going to cross it because they like it and they don't have any respect for parents like me who feel unsafe. I mean, sir, with all due respect, you sued Crunch Fitness a few years ago. I mean, I'm not asking for much, but here's the thing, here's a call to action, okay? This fight that I've been doing, it's in all the schools, it's in all the institutions, and they're coming after the kids. So you need to wake up, stand up, and speak up, and you need to get activated now as a parent, because if you don't get activated now, what will you get activated about? So I don't appreciate this disrespectful attitude towards my boundaries. Nobody talks about that. But again, they don't care about me and they don't care about you, so you better get activated because they're going to continue pushing and pushing and pushing, and it's going to get to be a complete insane clown world. Thank you all.
The next speaker I have is Peggy Wiley. Peggy Wiley?
Hi, I'm Peggy Wiley. I worked for the YMCA for the past ten years. I am the water aerobic instructor there. I've known Christie for two years now, for as long as she's been at the Y. I have been in the locker room with her many of the times, and I see it not a threat. I was, happened to be in there the day that this young lady was taking a shower. She did not see Chrissy. She was in the shower the whole time. The whole time she was in the shower, she just heard Chrissy's voice, and she assumed that she was a man because she has a deep voice. But once she did not
Ma'am, hold on one second.
Okay, looks like there's, let me see if we can figure out what this kerfuffle is.
Can we close the doors, please? Can somebody please close the doors? And then?
Do you want to restart it?
Ma'am, we're going to restart your time because there was so much
You don't have to restart. We can start on the clock. You go whenever you're comfortable.
Yeah, because I wanted to make sure I hear what you're saying, and there was just too much disruption.
I happened to be in the locker room that day when this incident took place. I was witness to it. This young lady was in the shower, doing her business, while we were out doing our business, getting dressed together, and we were talking together, and Chrissy left and she said, "Goodbye, I love you, I'll see you next year." And I said, "Goodbye, I'll see you next year." And Chrissy left, the young girl opened up the shower curtain and asked me if that was a man. I said, "No, that's a woman." So I assume she didn't see anything who Chrissy was. And there was an incident report written up. There was a medical There was an incident report taken by this young lady stating that she heard and did not see, and that's all I have to say.
I know.
And, no, I have one more thing to say. YMCA has been good to me. They're a pillar, they're a backbone to this community. They accept everybody. If you close down the Cameron, you're going to shut that whole pool down to a lot of people who need it and who really rely on it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
God bless everybody.
The next speaker I have is Jenne.
We're going to take about a fifteen-minute recess, folks.
Okay. All right, well, they're taking a recess, so we'll, I'm gonna, they're going to turn that off. We'll, we'll wait for them. Yay, I'm excited Genevieve is here with us. I'm going to put myself on, that will hopefully come back very shortly. So this is, just so everyone here knows, I think that you all are getting this, this is live from the Santee City Council meeting. So we are hearing, this is the case of the man who was in the shower at a YMCA, and Rebecca, the girl's name is Rebecca, if I can pull up. Her name is Rebecca Phillips, and his name is Christopher Woods. So as Genevieve has reported, I believe Jennifer broke this story, Genevieve broke this story on 4 Pub. He has sued gyms in the past. This is a maneuver for him. This is his, you know, this is his grift that he has done before. He did it at the Alcohene Crunch Fitness. So this is something that he has done before he won money. The last time, he has the same story that he has before. You know, he swims, it's for his fitness, he's trying to lose sixty pounds. I think that's what he almost very literally said before. Oh, and love that Suzanne Behrling is here too. You know, and what is happening is this girl is being told that she can't have boundaries around her body. You know, this, this is incredibly insane and incredibly frustrating. What we're hearing from tonight is people from the community. We have heard another of women speaking out for boundaries. I loved that speech by that dad. That was so incredible to see. I hope that we will hear more speeches like that. It looks like there's some kind of kerfuffle going on, fight perhaps in the hall. So I don't know what that was. We'll have to hear about that soon. Genevieve says ACLU supported his lawsuit, as per usual. We don't know what the settlement amounted to, but he did get a payout. I'm going to bring up, we see on his, I'm going to bring up his Facebook if I can. Let's see. So this man claims that he had, if I can find it, he claims that he had surgery, but we don't know. So there is a video of him on his Facebook saying, let's see, saying that he had the surgery. I'm going to see if I can find it. I did have it on his Facebook before. I wish that I didn't take down all of my, my things, but here's the thing. He claims that he had it, but there's no real pictures. There's no real evidence, and it doesn't matter, and that's the whole thing. It doesn't matter. Oh, okay, so he went to Bowers. You know, and the whole thing is, it doesn't matter. You know, castrated men are not women, so it doesn't matter if they castrate, they still shouldn't be in the locker room. You know, and what happened to this young woman is the same thing that happened to Julie Jaman. You know, she was showering, she heard a man's voice, and she responded. You know, that last woman who spoke, who is the woman from the YMCA, it's ridiculous of her to say that the girl was wrong. She heard what she heard, and then there's this adult in front of a seventeen-year-old girl telling her that she's, she's lying and that she's wrong and that, that her senses and her instincts were wrong. You know, this, this is quite shocking. Yes, so this is, yes, absolutely, the compartmentalization, compartmentalizing, objectifying, and commodifying women, that we are just a collection of parts that men can purchase, objects to purchase and put on. So it's, it's really a horrific mindset. The value set behind this is incredibly sick. Let me see. Yeah, you know, it doesn't matter what he says he is. It is gaslighting. They, they are castrated, they're just as scary as other men. It doesn't matter what is, I mean, it doesn't matter what's between their pants, they're men. I think we do need to treat them all the same way. Yeah, he was outside that hospital, but it, yeah, it doesn't matter. Yeah, you know, this, of course, it doesn't take into account women who have religious concerns. Absolutely, absolutely Suzanne. Women are not interchangeable parts, and this is why, you know, what Suzanne brings up, what Genevieve brings up, Alex Aaron brings this up, but the sort of, the intersections of pornography, medicalization of women's bodies, profit being made off of women's bodies, all of these things intersect, the value sets of these things are all the same. So these are why making these connections are so important, because, you know, what Suzanne is saying is true, and what I always say, we are all fully embodied whole human beings, and that's why it's so important for us to remember our embodiment. Yeah, you know, and, and hopefully, as much as possible, we are responsive to our instincts. I worry about the kids coming up who will no longer be able to be responsive to their instincts. I'm going to play you, since we're waiting, I, just so you know, this, we're still waiting. This is still on, it's still on hold, so that's why I'm, I'm just going to stick with you guys until they come back. But I'm going to play you a thing that I saw on my Facebook today, if I can find it, which is, was from, where is it? Here we go. Okay, so let me share this screen. Share screen, share screen, window. Wait, where is this screen I want to share? Okay, this I want to share. I'm going to bring this in, I'm going to turn this on, and we'll start over again. So this is, this is in North Carolina. This is a nursery school with kids under the age of five.
Hey, Huckleberries. Today, I wanted to introduce you to a new friend in our class. Now, this, Huckleberries, is my friend Nash. Now this, Huckleberries, is my friend Nash. Their first day in our class. They're just looking around at all of you, and they're so curious to know who you all are. Today, uh, was fun. It was really interesting though, knowing going in, being like, I don't know what questions Kettos are gonna have or what they're gonna say, um, which is both like nerve-wracking, but also kind of exciting. It's that place of, um, not knowing as a teacher and just being okay with that. And the friend likes to ask the question, "Are you a boy or a girl?" And Nash answers, "I'm just a kid."
But a kid, like kids can be boys or...
They can be boys or girls. Yeah.
They may be non-binary.
Yeah. It was just like, non-binary, yeah. That's just something that we know. This is something, I mean, it's like, they're four and five years old and they just didn't make a big deal out of being a boy or a girl.
Because they're indoctrinated already.
Testament to how much we've been talking about it in the classroom, that you never mentioned the term "non-binary." It was a child who brought that up because it's constantly in conversation. Yeah, just like me. So Nash, just like me, is non-binary. So they aren't sure if they're a boy or a girl. So when people ask them, "Are you a boy or a girl?", right now they just feel like saying, "I'm a kid." They're figuring it out.
Why does he like, does he like stars?
They like stars.
They like stars.
Yeah, and they are really... They wore their star shirt because it's their favorite shirt. Because they were nervous today, they thought they would wear something that makes them feel special.
Uh, yeah, so that was highly upsetting and you'll, you see that the kids, um, they try to assert their reality. They try to assert what they're seeing. He said this, um, and then she sort of parrots back to them, "They, they." Um, and the kids have to repeat it back. So what's happening is ultimately she is telling the kids, "You're not allowed to trust your eyes. You're not allowed to trust what's in front of you. You cannot trust the signals that your own body is sending you. You can't trust your own body." So that is the messaging, that is the underlying value of this program. It dissociates them from the own authority. Oh, here we go, we're going back.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna come back into, uh, session. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna come back into session. I'm gonna have to ask the news media to please, uh, take their places. Don't make me throw you out. Just kidding, by the way. All right, there, there's, um, there are still some open seats out there for those who are maybe tired of standing. And, uh, so feel free to come on in and have a seat. We put them out there for you. Well, I want to thank everybody so far. We have about eight, uh, six or seven more speakers, nine speakers?
Nine.
Nine speakers, so we'll be done with this pretty soon. So, uh, please, uh, thank you very much for your patience and thank you for your, um, you know, keeping things at the very low level and not having too much outbreak. So let's go ahead and call the next speaker, please.
Next speaker I have is Janet Garvin. Reminder, you have two minutes.
Hi, Janet.
Good evening, council members. It's a very different reason.
Can you pull the mic closer?
Very different reason I came to council tonight. I came to support Kristen Woods. I've known her for quite a long time, uh, through East County Democratic Club. Known her as a very gentle and kind woman. Have to say that, uh, my brother, um, was, is, was gay. He's committed suicide a while back. I think that probably had something to do with his, um, gender identity. Um, he had a difficult time. He was, uh, came out in a time that was very difficult for gay people to come out in and struggled for a long time, and I saw it. Um, I now have two grandchildren. One's non-binary and one's a lesbian. And I know it's gonna be easier for them, but they're gonna still have struggles. So, um, it's a issue that's very near to my heart. And, um, I just wanted to remind the council, um, you've spent a lot of time in the last two years working on values for Santee and working on developing, uh, an environment that is inclusive and, uh, respects diversity and, uh, is, uh, wants to make Santee an inviting and, uh, inclusive, uh, place to be for all people, no matter who they are. And I, I just want you to, and I implore you to con- continue to, um, develop and, uh, embrace those values. So thank you very much.
The next speaker I have is Tammy Phalen. Tammy?
Is Tammy here? Okay, let's go ahead.
The next speaker I have is Corbin Sorrell?
Hello, everybody. I think, uh, what am I, right? I think, uh, a lot of things are getting lost in translation here and I think a lot of hate is being flown by both sides, this left versus right sides, these labels, whatever it is you wanna call it, that I think just divide and distract us, but at a certain point, we have to, we have to, regardless of how anybody feels and, Chrissy, I, I definitely acknowledge how you feel. You can feel as however you want and I acknowledge that 100% and I agree that you're not a threat to anybody, but at the end of the day, as a society, as a society, if society is gonna, gonna continue to function and flourish as it is, we have to agree on basic fundamental things. Like, I'll pick on you for a little bit, Sean. You're wearing a, a blue and gold striped tie. All right? Everybody can agree on that, and if Kathy says it's a red and pink polka dot tie, everybody would say you're crazy, right? That is a blue and yellow, uh, gold tie, that's, that's it. That is it. All right, two plus two equals four. Things like that, it can never equals five. We have to agree on basic fundamental issues and truths if we're going to continue to function as a society as we do today. If we don't, we are charting into unprecedented territories. If we cannot do that basic stuff, we can disagree all day long about the vaccine issues, the abortion issues, whatever, but if we cannot agree that that's a blue and gold tie and two plus two equals four and a man is a man and a woman is a woman, then we are headed into uncharted and potentially disastrous territories for as a, as society goes and we have never experienced something like that ever before in human history. So that is just a quick warning to just take that under consideration when you are thinking about this entire conversation and thank you for your time.
The next speaker I have is Louise Uridel.
Was that Maurice?
No, it's L-O-U-I-S, Louise. Lois, Louise.
Is that her last name?
Yes, Ur- Uridel, U-R-I-D-E-L. Okay, the next speaker I have is Monique. Monique? Reminder, you have two minutes.
Down here on the end, give them that picture down there on the end.
It's for, right here.
Yeah, it's kinda like court. They want you to go to a certain place first. But thanks.
Hello. I'm a heterosexual mom, married mom of three daughters and I've met Christine and I'm very comfortable with her or any transgender woman, uh, being with any of my three daughters, my youngest being 11. Um, so 17-year-old Rebecca Phillips had a major disservice done to her. She saw something that no one had ever educated her about. So she told the front desk at the YMCA and they told her that what she saw was a transgender woman and that she was allowed to be in the women's restroom. But this didn't explain to Rebecca what transgender was and why someone might be that way. Rebecca went home and instead of being educated on what transgender was, she was prompted to come to City Hall where her story was inflated and many lies were told. And Rebecca knows in her heart that this happened. 66-year-old Christine Wood is a transgender female, as you have met her, with children and grandchildren. And I had the pleasure of meeting her at the protest and her daughter and granddaughter were present there. Um, you know, as she stated, she's lost 60 pounds, uh, during quarantine.
Who cares?
By keeping up with classes at the gym.
Who cares?
And she state, has stated, as we all know, she has, has had gender confirmation surgery. So any stories or protests, uh, any stories, protest signs or council members that are spreading lies about a 17-year-old seeing a penis is just not true. Tracy Phil, who put the egregious Y protest together, has worked as a special education assistant but was fired from her job because she refused to keep children safe by testing weekly for COVID. I worked in special education for...
The next speaker I have is Michelle Dressler. Michelle Dressler, can you come up to the podium, please? Ma'am, your time is up.
Hi, council. My name is Michelle Dressler. I'm a Santee resident, but I'm just here tonight as a member of Santee Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, there's been a lot of, um, discussion already, but I just wanted to tell everyone who's still in this room about Fido Fest. It is Saturday. All right, um, it's Saturday, February 25th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Um, it's gonna be at Town Center Community Park East where the Twilight Brews and Bites, Twilight Brews and Bites, the festival formerly known as the Bluegrass Festival. Um, that's where it, that'll be, I'm pretty sure, but, um, you can check me on that. Uh, the website is santeespecialevents.com, all one word, no hyphens, no underscores or anything like that. And, um, yeah, so Fido Fest, once again, Saturday, February 25th. And we still need lots of volunteers and donations too, so anything that dogs and shelters can use, um, blankets, old towels, any extra dog food or whatever, um, we could definitely use that. So that's all. Thank you.
You have two minutes. The next speaker I have is Sherice Stack. Sherice Stack?
Perfect example of you can speak about anything on a non-agenda public comment.
Good evening, city council, mayor and city staff. I'm a longtime Santee resident. Um, I have been here so long that I was at the first Fido Fest. It was fantastic. I am here today to share my thoughts. I appreciate all the comments that have been shared before and appreciate this opportunity. I am concerned in regards to, um, recent events that have happened and situations that seem to be brewing, uh, misunderstanding and situations that don't support compassion, dignity, fairness, equity or respect for others. Um, I come, I've come to Santee because it's a place for families and a place where hopefully children can learn those important pieces or important values in their life. I've been a longtime YMCA member, um, love the Y, fully support their policies and, um, support their programs to create safe spaces for all. Um, they do have divided locker spaces, so for those who need additional privacy, that is available. Um, if people feel that they are not safe. Um, however, I wanna point out that I feel like it is a safe space. I've never felt unsafe there and that simply being LGBTQ+ does not equal being a threat. Um, I wanted to also say that I hope, um, people, when they are thinking about their concerns about others, base their safety concerns on content of one's behavior and character, rather than maybe assumptions. Again, I want to support safe space for all, opportunities for people to raise their voice and be heard. I'm asking for the city council to support policies and ordinances that support community agencies and individuals with safe spaces for all and that support compassion, dignity, equity, fairness and respect and renew the wise lease.
The next speaker I have is Jasmine Briscoe.
Good morning, councilor, or good evening. Um, my name is Jasmine. I'm a longtime resident of San Diego for about 10 years and soon to be East County resident. I'm just here to address the concerns considering the Y, of course, and as many have stated before me, in support of Kristen Woods. Um, uh, having been to the second protest, there were a lot of hateful and derogatory comments made, not just towards Kristen, but towards the entire LGBT community. One such member saying that he wanted to string us up and hang us. Um, I, I don't know exactly how that resonates in all of your hearts and your minds, but we just wanna be who we are and I would appreciate it if there was such an ordinance or something of that and to help put a safe space out for us. Because while there is progress and there is inclusivity, there is a lot left to be desired and a lot left to, to be done for, for progress, rather than sit there and be hateful and, and say, "Hey, trans women are, are, are not women, or trans men are not men." It, it, it's just a bit astounding in this day and age, given how much technology and advancements that we've made.
How, how does it, what, what does technology have to do with it?
Thanks for Kristen, for being so supportive and also staying so strong and that, that everyone who's been here to support us is, is just been amazing. And for those who remain, who use bigotry and religion and family values as a place of hate, I, I don't know exactly what to say because that's, that's not what everyone here was told to be, right? When we're all growing up, we're supposed to be kind and caring to one another and that's just twisting values to our use. Thank you.
The final speaker I have is Eve Pocuri. You have two minutes.
Great. Well, I'm not here to hate anybody and, um, I really respect, uh, Christine speaking up here.
Mr. Pocuri, two minutes.
Two minutes, yeah, I got it. Thank you, Mayor Minto. So, the eunuch has existed in the Bible for thousands of years. What did Jesus say? "For there are eunuchs who are born that way, there are eunuchs who have been made eunuchs by others, and there are those who choose to live like eunuchs for the sake of the kingdom of heaven. Those who can accept this should accept it."
What in the hell?
However, what is he speaking about? Those who have given up who they were to become something different. For the sake of the kingdom of God, to serve, to do good. Why? Because it changes the mindset. What we're dealing with, though, is not that. What we're dealing with is the law that is so broadly written that's causing fear in cisgender females, causing fear of fathers who have children. Where do you draw the line? That's the problem here. All these people are well-intentioned. You know, they don't wanna harm anyone. The people who are concerned about their families, they don't wanna harm anyone. But where do you draw the line? What, what exactly is it?
Thank you, Chris.
And how do you tell? It's so blended, the definition is so broad. It puts legislatures in a very difficult position because the Son of God even admitted, "The Philip baptized a eunuch from Ethiopia. Queen of Sheba brought to King Solomon a eunuch." So what, so, I, I don't, it's not a derogatory word, but the point of it is, 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 is there is, so, and he says, "Accept it," but what do you do about the broad definition that puts so much confusion in the minds of people?
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, draws, um, our public comment to close. And I just wanna close with this, this one short statement. Is that, um, uh, Vice Mayor Koval and I have met with the YMCA. We are conferring with, uh, you know, our legal team. And we are going to make sure that everybody is safe and everybody is valued in our community. Because that's the most important thing. We don't know what that looks like yet, but we're gonna get there. Thank you very much for all of your comments tonight and thank you for your patience.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn this off, let me see. So, uh, a couple of things, I wanna show you guys something. First of all, just this, this eunuch's argument, this just shows how much, uh, the ideology itself is a religion. Uh, second of all, everyone, please, uh, look at Genevieve Glock's research on the eunuch uh, and how WPATH has been supporting this. This is, this, what he's talking about, he, this guy is actually quite up to date because this is, uh, very much in standing, uh, with the direction that WPATH is going. Um, uh, Genevieve, if you wanna drop a link, um, to your, um, I, I, I think, did, did, uh, was it, was your interview about that on Whose Body Is It? Um, I remember, I saw, I'm gonna look for that in a second, but I wanna show you guys this because, um, okay. Yes, the girls could, the girls could identify as eunuch. Um, uh, but this, uh, 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 this, this, uh, religious, uh, uh, ideology, um, is being used right now. I actually just sent this video, um, to my family. Let me, I'm gonna share my screen with you right now, um, and bring up this. Okay, um, let's see here. Uh, let me see if I can get that a little bigger. Let's see. Okay, oh wait, no, that's not what I wanna bring up, hold on, not that one. Uh, stop sharing this. One second. This one, okay. So this is it. Um, so this is how they are using this, um, religious notion. So this is, this, this is how we see how it's a cult. And they're, they're bringing this into, um, an organized religious capacity. They're bringing this into their Christianity. Um, so, so watch this woman. So she's saying, are there this kind of people in the Bible? Yes, and then she's gonna explain it to us. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna show this to you.
Yeah, is it saying they're going to hell? No, Jesus actually lists of gender-queer people as model disciples. Really? Yeah, Matthew nineteen twelve, there are eunuchs who are born that way, some who are made eunuchs by others and some who will become eunuchs for the sake of the kingdom of heaven.
This is what he quoted.
Sure answer, yes. But being eunuch is not the same as being trans. Trans can mean a lot of things, but here's how this passage affirms gender queer, trans, gender non-conforming and intersex people. Go along, first, it says some people are born eunuchs. Jesus affirms, there can be more than just male or female at birth. Then Jesus says, some will become eunuchs for the sake of the kingdom of heaven. In other words, some people who are assigned male at birth will later choose a different gender identification as part of their work of following God. Could it be symbolic? I thought this was about priests being celibate. Priests didn't have to be celibate until the eleven hundreds. Also, a lot of eunuchs could and did still have sexual relationships, they just couldn't procreate. Weren't they also outcast? Yes, while some eunuchs had high-power jobs in the royal courts, they also faced a lot of discrimination. So it's notable when a Christian Philip runs into an Ethiopian eunuch along the road and the eunuch says, what is there to prevent me from being baptized? Philip doesn't say, well, you can't be a Christian because you don't fit the gender binary. Philip stops the chariot, goes down to the water and baptizes them. So if people don't fit the binary, whether they're born that way or they even choose that later in life, they're cool with Jesus? They're not just cool with him, they're celebrated as models of discipleship.
Uh, yes, so that is, that is the direction that the propaganda is going. Uh, they're not just celebrated, they're models, they're, they're to be worshipped. Um, there, there's a lot of things that are coming this way that, that we are gonna start seeing how truly this is a theology. Um, there was, uh, I, I could bring it up, but I'm gonna use it later. Um, but there, there was just a, um, uh, uh, what do you call it? A billboard in, uh, Detroit, uh, that said, "Trans is sacred," uh, in Detroit. Um, there, there's a lot of this, um, religious worship thing, uh, that is really beginning to happen. Um, it's, it's highly concerning, um. Uh, let's see. There we go. Okay, so, um, this, I, I don't know if you talked about it, Genevieve, on, um, on Whose Body Is It? But I do see, I don't know if she's back in the chat right now. Um, but I do see, oh, thank you, Dana. Uh, thank you so much and thank you for everyone, um, who's been putting up. I'm gonna put, this is a link, um, to Genevieve talking about, um, eunuchs on, uh, Benjamin Boyce's channel. Uh, I don't know if she, I hope you didn't have to leave to go search for it too hard, cause I did find it. Um, and I know you've spoken about it elsewhere. I did think I thought I saw you speaking about it at Whose Body Is It? But I think on Whose Body Is It, you were talking about sissy hypno porn, now that I think of it. Um, but anyone who, uh, anyone who wants to, um, watch Genevieve, uh, speak in depth about this, um, and how this progression has happened and how the people who are, um, writing the standards and guides for WPATH, um, this, this is, um, uh, uh, this is there. So this is on her on Benjamin Boyce and you, you're saying you did talk about it on Whose Body Is It? Let me see. Let me see if I can get that one too, cause obviously I love, uh, Isabella. Oh, wait. Uh, oh, here we go, wait. Uh, well, I don't know, her Apple podcast came up. I know that shit's on YouTube as well. Um, so everyone can go to Whose Body Is It on YouTube as well, uh, to talk about it. Oh, good. Well, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to have Genevieve on my channel because I've been wanting to have Genevieve on my channel for a while. And I keep, I keep, um, not doing interviews, cause I keep doing so many live streams that, um, I get a little tuckered out, honestly. And I am also right now, as I told people the other day, uh, I'm trying to ground myself in some of my own research, all this stuff that I talk about embodiment. I'm trying to put that into language because I really want to, uh, talk about coming from this at a values level. Um, I am really appreciative of everyone who has been in the livestream today. I think, um, us tuning into these events in a group setting, uh, is really, um, nourishing and fortifying. I feel like these watch parties, um, I don't know, it just helps make this material more palatable. Uh, it was great. I think overall what we saw is that we saw, um, you know, we saw a lot of good people speaking out. It's clear that we need to get our talking points across. I, I feel like a lot of people, um, they, they don't have a lot of grounding, uh, in what is truly important to mention. I feel like, uh, everything that, that we say about boundaries and just keeping it clear. You know, this isn't about hate, this is about, uh, sex-based safeguarding, this is about sexism. You know, I wish that every time someone brought up, you know, um, uh, the hate thing, uh, we talked about sexism. So I, I would love to see that. Uh, thank you, Genevieve. And I wanna put up, um, Joyce is a woman who, uh, she and I did our grad program together. Um, she has her PhD and she did her, um, her doctoral, um, dissertation was on cults. And she is a second-generation cult survivor. So, uh, I also have told Joyce, I wanna have Joyce on, uh, because I think there is so much in what we're seeing in this ideology, uh, and how functionally, functionally it is a cult. That's how it functions. Um, so all of the indicators, uh, that we see that, that tell you, oh, that's a cult, we see that here. I love that, yeah, this is our, this is our sports. This is, this is our sports ball, as I call it. Um, alright ladies, uh, well, I, I love being here with you. Um, we, I'm gonna keep these going whenever they, they happen. Um, as I always say, if, if someone is putting on an event in their town, let me know. Uh, but, um, there's a lot more coming, uh, from my channel for those of you who supported today. Um, I really appreciate it, cause it, it just, it covers the cost of the livestream. So, um, I, I appreciate that, it's really, really helpful. It takes a lot of pressure off of me, um, so I so appreciate it. Uh, thank you. And I will see you all the next time something like this goes down. I just decided to put this one up spontaneously. Um, so the next time something like this goes down, I'll, I'll probably do the same thing. Uh, but hopefully, uh, once I finish this writing project that I'm on, um, I'm gonna take the writing project and I'll, I'll speak it through on some of these livestreams so I can talk you through the work. Uh, but I thank you all so much, uh, and I will see you shortly. Bye.